Good evening.
Go ahead.
Okay. This is a web-based call, so we are operating under the following procedures. This session is being audio recorded. Please be advised that today we are also recording the video of these proceedings. We will not use the chat feature in this meeting to ensure good sound quality. The default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute. Board members and staff will generally remain on mute except for when speaking or voting. Public comment will only be accepted during the public hearing portion of the meeting. The chair will announce when the hearing is open and will ask for public comment. Public comments will not be accepted after the hearing is closed. If a member of the public creates an audio or visual disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of staff or the chair. When the hearing opens, you may give your comments in the following manner. Use the raised hand feature in Zoom and wait to be called on. Before the hearing closes, we will ask for any new comments from people who are only able to join by phone or unable to use the raised hand feature. If multiple people attempt to speak at once, staff will help moderate. State your name and address for the record. If multiple people wish to speak, the meeting moderator will call you individually. Please listen for instructions. We appreciate your attendance during this meeting. Should you have any questions about the procedure, you may call our staff at 860-444-5813 after the meeting is ended. Jill, I did not get the other read-in about the meetings and the process of appeal from the decisions.
You can just read it off of the agenda.
No, the read-in that says that if anybody agrees our decisions.
Oh, did you?
That part.
What's on that?
I didn't get that.
You can use the one from last time as well. You can just change the date.
I don't, I don't save them, so.
Okay, hang on a second. Got it. This is an older one, just change the date.
Are you sending it to her? Are you reading it?
No, I'll send it to you. We didn't copy, so I don't have.
Okay. Good evening. The zoning board of appeals, public meeting of the town of Waterford is now in session. The second day of March, 2022, 6:30 PM. All decisions of the board are final. In accordance with Connecticut general statute eight dash eight B, any person aggrieved by any decision of the board may take an appeal to the Superior Court. The appeal shall be commenced in accordance with the section eight dash eight F and G within 15 days from the date the notice of this decision was published as required by general statutes. So this evening, we will appoint Greg Gallup for Michelle.
Kathy, let's have Dawn do role first and then you can appoint.
Okay.
Kathy Gonyo.
Here.
Michelle Criss.
Absent.
Anne Darling. Warren McKenzie.
Present.
John Morgan.
Here.
Greg Gallup.
Here.
William Hersfeld.
I'm here.
Jason Mariaski.
Absent.
Absent.
Okay, now you can appoint.
Okay. So tonight, we will appoint Greg Gallup for Michelle Criss.
Okay.
Okay. Approval of the February 2nd meeting minutes. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
I abstaining, I was not at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. So moved. Okay. Moving along, public hearing. Application ZBA dash 22 dash four. Appeal of Matthew Scott McNeil, owner and applicant of 42 My Rock Avenue, R20 zone. Variances are requested from zoning regulations, section 4.1, 4.4.1, front yard setback variance of 13 feet to allow a front yard setback of 37 feet. And 4.4.3 rear yard setback variance of 11 feet to allow for rear yard setback of 39 feet. Variances are requested to construct in addition to the existing house as shown on plans entitled zoning location survey property of Matthew Scott McNeil for property located at 42 My Rock Avenue, Waterford, Connecticut dated December 28, 2021.
Make sure you list all the exhibits, please, Kathy.
Sure. Yeah, exhibit one, application and support material. Exhibit two is plan titled zoning location survey property of Matthew Scott McNeil dated December 28, 2021. Exhibit three, hearing notification letter to applicant dated February 8, 2022, along with certificates of mailing. Exhibit four, notice of public hearing published in the day newspaper on February 16, 2022, and February 23, 2022. And exhibit five is proposed building plans. Is the applicant here?
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jim Bernardo. My address is 102A Spithead Road here in Waterford. And I'm a land severe license here in Connecticut. And I'm here tonight representing Matthew Scott McNeil on the property at 42 My Rock Avenue. Most of you, this should probably look pretty familiar. There was an application granted from the zoning board of appeals back in September of 2021 for the same exact setback variances. We're asking for a variance for 13 feet to allow a front yard setback of 37 and a rear yard setback of 11 feet to allow for 39 feet, which are the same variances that were granted back in September. What we found as we started going to architectural and to code review plans was that there, if you remember correctly, the addition was originally supposed to encompass the breezeway between the garage and the house. We found out that there wasn't enough room to get an interior set of stairway in the garage that would work for code. So we had, and using that landing space or that breezeway space. So we had to input that into the actual garage, which cut us short for space in the garage. In addition, there's an egress stair located on the second floor for the bedroom. So we couldn't bring the addition forward or block that space because that's needed as a second set of egress from the upper area. So this lot is 100 by 100. It's a portion of a subdivision of lots from 1920, which obviously is prior to your zoning regulations. Lot serviced by municipal water and sewer. And this is again going to be an apartment above the garage for the owner's family. And reason, I seem to have lost my notes. The hardship that we're claiming is basically the same that were approved again in the September application, that again, the lot was created prior to the current zoning regulations. So strict enforcement of that regulation is a hardship on the lot. It's also keeping in harmony with the rest of the neighborhood. And the variances that we are requesting are not substantial. Those were the three findings by the zoning board of appeals at the time in September, and they are all still valid. What we did was we extended the garage an extra four feet to the south. No change in the variances. We're that we still meet the side yard setback for that zone. And we're asking that the commission review it and approve it based on your criteria in your zoning regulations, 27.5 A through K. We feel it meets all the requirements. I can review those items one by one. The size and intensity of the proposal under consideration and its potential impact on the surrounding neighborhood, including ownership is and the effect on adjacent properties and changes in zoning regs, which have occurred since the lot in question was created, which obviously we've just reviewed that there were no regulations when the lot was created. B is the existence of conditions of the same kind and/or character on other properties within the surrounding neighborhood. Again, the findings of this commission were that it was in harmony and in keeping with the neighborhood character. C is the impact the proposed quest will have on the capacity of adjacent streets to handle peak traffic flows without causing congestion and without creating any traffic hazards. This is My Rock Avenue, which continues on to Willetts down to Route 1. There's certainly a significant substantial ability to carry whatever additional traffic may result from the addition. The possible obstruction of light or air or the emission of noise, light, smoke, odor, gas dust, or vibration and noxious or offensive quantities, which might cause a proposal under consideration and the impact on addition on adjacent properties. We don't feel that that's going to be an issue with just the small garage addition. Item E is the resultant effect on the proposal and the consideration would have on the value and utilization of other properties within the surrounding neighborhood. And I think this actually would improve the property value for the adjacent properties, as well as the, obviously, the property under construction. The existence of unusual topography on the property in question, the nature, location, and height of all existing proposed buildings. We're not claiming a topographic hardship. It's a pretty flat lot. It should not have any issues with drainage or runoff. This is significant parking, which is your item. G, H is ability for fire protection and police protection. Obviously, there will be no impacts there. I is preservation of the character of the neighborhood, which again, this commission found back in September. It was in keeping with the neighborhood. J is the location of existing water and sewage, which again, the lot is served by both municipal water and sewer, and they have adequate capacity. And then K is all other standards prescribed by these regulations. So just in closing, again, the variances that are requested are no different than what was requested before. We just had to make the addition a little bit wider going to the south in order to accommodate an interior stairway and the upper egress window for the second floor bedroom. It was a change required by architectural design. And that's why we're back in front of the commission for new variance requests.
I have, I have, oh, I'm sorry. I forget.
Go ahead, Anne.
I know, I know I'm not supposed to do that. I'm just curious. I know this is a minor change that you've brought forth, but when a change comes about on a on this, do the budding neighbors have to be re notified because there is a change? And then my question is, were they? And did anyone speak?
That was, that was part of the exhibits.
Yes, I know.
That I noted in the beginning.
All right. I did see that.
That they were notified.
And and this handled as a totally new application. The same procedures are followed as far as notification and notices in the papers. It's basically handles a totally new application.
Thank you.
The owner does, like I say, does have a variance now approved for these same setbacks.
Okay. As I was reading this, I realized we had done this before. So that's why I had asked. I wasn't sure if this, the mailings were from the last time or this time. But thank you for answering my question.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions for Mr. Bernardo?
Well, I just had a question in the same line as Annie's. And that is, has anybody spoken up either previously or on the second notification about any of the neighbors chimed in about their preferences or reservations about this?
Any communication would have been in our exhibits.
Okay, all right. And another thing, one thing that I noticed looking at the at the survey is a reference to My Rock 42R. So what's that about? And where's the access? Are they landlocked or is this coming in from the other side? Why would it be My Rock 42R? What does that mean?
Okay, there actually is a 42R. This question came up at the previous application. That property has access off of Longview Street and where the apartments are. They do not have any access across this property. It's, it has nothing to do with this property. It just happens to be the address. Their legal address is 42R, but their access is off of Longview.
Okay, so did they get mail at 42R My Rock?
It's a vacant lot right now. Yeah, it's a vacant piece of property. Yeah.
Okay, but if it's ever developed, it would be developed off Longview.
Correct.
It would not need access across 42.
No.
Okay.
They have no legal right to do it. There's no easement or anything currently in the land records for that.
Okay. Yeah, it didn't look like there was, you know, a built-in access to it. So I figured it had to be from somewhere else. So thank you for answering that question.
It's a very interesting layout off of Longview, but they do have access from there.
Yeah, and by the way, I just want to ask what appears to be obvious from the deed, but this is Johnny Mingo's old place, right? Did anybody know Johnny Mingo?
I'm not sure who the previous owner was.
Okay.
I saw it on the deed, but I don't know who he is.
Okay, yeah, I know him. He was a very pleasant, very pleasant, very quiet guy. I believe he worked at EB and retired and passed away suddenly a little while ago. And I noticed the chicken coop back there because I remember him talking about having their own eggs. His wife did a lot with baking and stuff like that. Or stuff, so. Enough of these sides.
Right. Does anybody on the board have any other questions?
I did my little and.
Yes.
This is, this is totally minor, but I just wanted to bring, and I don't know if this needs to be changed because it's a legal document. And certainly, this is not under coastal area management boundary. And it's not, so it says no. Is a CAM report required? No. And then it says if yes, the report is attached. And they checked off yes. So I don't know if you need to change that to say no. I'm sure it was a slip of the hand with the pen. And then I have one other question.
Where were you seeing that, Anne? What?
Go to page three of three in the application. And it talks about postal.
Okay.
And it's just minor, but I don't know legally, does that have to be changed? Number 12. My other question. It says here additional applicant. Um, so the applicant is Matthew McNeil. And then do, does, do we have to put additional applicant on the one, on the first line? Or is that just totally, we don't have to worry about it?
That's Jim Bernardo's signature. He's the agent representing them.
No, no, no. This is on the first page. It says application request type for variance. And then it just has additional applicant. So I'm just asking, and I do believe that the person, the additional applicant is a uncle to this young man, the applicant. Legally, should that not be on there? Because. McNeil. I can answer that for you. Mr. Wallace was the person that was submitting the application and wanted some communication from the town. And since he's not the property owner and he wasn't acting as the agent like Mr. Bernardo is, he needed to appear on the application in some fashion so that we could communicate with him. Thank you, just to clear it up. Just. No problem. Just curious.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions regarding this application? Okay. So does anybody in the general public have anything to add in this application? Anybody in the general public like to speak on behalf of this application? Would anybody in the general public like to speak on behalf of this application? Anybody like to speak against this application? Anybody like to speak against this application? Anybody like to speak against this application? Hearing none. Then the hearing for ZBA dash 22 dash four is now closed. Hey, application review. Application review of ZBA 22 dash one. Appeal of Libby Hill LLC, owner and applicant at 934 and 940 Hartford Turnpike IG Zone. Variances are requested from zoning up regulations, section 11.4.1, reduced front yard setback 41 feet from 75 feet to 34 feet. Section 20 dash 17 dash 2A, reduced landscape buffer strip from five feet from 15 feet to 10 feet. Variances are needed to construct a self-storage facility on the property located at 934 and 940 Hartford Turnpike as shown on plans titled 934, 940 Hartford Turnpike. Proposed use self-storage dated 12/6/21. Okay. So in this application review, we need to, as a board, make sure that the hardship is established and that if we make any motions, we reference our zoning regulations in 27.5 criteria for decisions. So I'm so sorry. Does anybody want to make a motion? On the board? I need my board members. Does anybody on the board want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to you. I'll make a motion to approve. Is that where you're? Okay. And I don't have the form in front of me to give you the chapter and verse. So if somebody can help me with that, but whatever's there, I would approve it.
So when we make a motion, we make a motion, say it's in keeping with the neighborhood per section 27 or as a result of.
And that, but I just don't have that form in front of me to explain in those terms. So if somebody else wants to make the motion and take it forward with that data, feel free while I find the form that I need to recite that.
Annie, Warren, anybody? Right.
Um, I would also like to speak on, in favor of this application 22 dash one. On a personal note, just any business trying to do business in town of Waterford, I would always do my best to support. But that being said, based on the criteria for decision, 27.5, I think we can look at it in section B, the existence of condition of the same kind and/or character on other properties within the surrounding neighborhood. I believe we are in a light industrial neighborhood. I think it's an R-zone. And so that would be more than fitting with the nature businesses already there. I'm sorry, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly what zone it says. It is, I'm sorry about that. And also, it would it would really be the only, it's a pretty good use for this property, given everything it's got going on with it as far as the wetlands and what they could actually develop on it. As far as the actual criterias, though, the fact that it wouldn't change or do anything differently than what's already going on there, so.
And do I have a second?
Annie, I will second the motion.
Thank you. Do I have any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So moved. All right, so moving on. Application review, ZBA dash 22 dash two. Appeal of Malik Realty LLC, owner and applicant at 118 Boston Post Road. CG Zone, variances are requested from zoning regulations. 8.1 point, 8.4.1, front yard setback. 69 foot reduction from 75 feet to 6 feet for proposed canopy. 8.4.1 for front yard setback. 19 feet reduction from 75 feet to 56 feet for proposed building. 8.4.2 side yard setback. Seven feet reduction from 30 to 23 feet. 8.4.3 rear yard setback. 30 foot, 33 foot reduction from 50 feet to 17 feet. 20.3. Parking spaces, four space reduction from 17 to 13 spaces. 20 dash 17 dash one. B landscaping of parking areas. Variance from requirement that the five yard set buffer be landscaped. Variance is requested to redevelop the site in accordance with basic industry practices and to provide parking, landscaping, and other improvements as shown on the plan entitled variance plan, convenience store and fueling station additions. 118 Boston Post Road, Waterford, Connecticut, dated July 16, 2021. Revised 12/2021. Okay. Um, do I have any motions on the table?
Kathy?
Yes.
When we make a motion, we can either make a motion to yes, approve it, or no, we did not approve it, correct?
I believe you're supposed to make motions for the positive.
To approve, to approve.
I'm not, yeah, and then and then you vote.
Can Jill or?
Attorney Laundergen will give you some legal advice on that, Anne.
Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. For the record, attorney Jeffrey Laundergen. I'm sitting in on this application because your usual town attorney, attorney Avina, who I know is on, has a conflict with this particular applicant. Under Roberts Rules of Order, there is no requirement that you make a motion in the positive or the negative. So either one would be appropriate. Whatever your custom might be is fine, but even varying from a custom along those lines is not going to invalidate the decision or the motion if you make it in the positive rather than the negative or vice versa. The decision or the motion if you make it in the positive rather than the negative or vice versa.
Okay, thank you for that. Yep. Um I would like to make a motion not to accept this application. And I'm making my decision. Do you want to do I? You want to hear my why I say this?
Yes.
Yes. I'm making my decision on our twenty-seven point five. Criteria for decisions and C, the impact of proposed requests. Will have on the capacity of adjacent streets to handle peak traffic loads without causing congestion and without creating any traffic hazards. I am just not happy with, I know, I know they've um brought down some of the parking spots. I'm just not clear, I'm not feeling good about the traffic flow there. It's bad enough now. Now you're gonna. Would like to put in a convenience store that's going to have more people. So, oh, I'm going to go in there and maybe you've got thirteen people there and maybe two more. Want to get into the to the area. So I vote against this uh uh application.
Okay, so for is there a second to vote against this application?
Uh Warren McKenzie will second that. Um the traffic flow and the way that general area is set up was a big concern for me.
I would just want to uh insert that it appears that they've increased, well, that they've got uh. Two ways to get, you know, to get in and out. Right now, there's only one. So it's, oh, no, I guess there I guess there's.
No, there is.
Never mind, never never mind. I I thought there was an increase.
They're not changing the traffic pattern. Um. There are still two ways to get in.
My point is moot, so I'll go mute.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, so um. We will take a vote and the vote is to not approve the application. Um. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have two.
Aye.
Okay, and any opposed?
I'm I'm still open for it.
So Greg.
I'm opposed.
So, okay, so you're opposed of the motion.
Correct.
Okay, so it's three to two. On the opposed.
I'm not clear. You're saying that he's.
That's why usually we make the motion.
All right.
To approve in the other way.
All right.
And then we have the discussion and then we usually make the motions. Um.
And it's two for and three against or vice versa.
Right.
Right.
If I I was just going to add, if it helps and you wanted to uh clarify it. Um if the person who made the motion um uh moves to uh. Revoke their motion and the person who seconds it uh moves to revoke it, then it takes the motion off the table. And then there'd be an opportunity to make a motion to approve the application. And then you could go ahead and have your vote.
Thank you.
Let's do that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I. Uh messed you up there. I will revoke my motion that I made um.
And Warren?
Warren McKenzie will withdraw his second.
Okay, so if there's a new motion on the table to um. Does anybody want to make a new motion? To approve?
I will make a new motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
No, you made it. You can't second it too.
No, Greg just made it.
I made it.
Uh.
Okay.
I was going to, but Greg beat me to it.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, so I have a motion and a second to approve. Now, we'll take a vote. All in favor to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
Anne Darling opposed.
Okay.
McKenzie opposes.
All right, so it's three to two.
Who was the third? Oh, you.
Me.
To approve it.
To approve it.
Okay.
However, uh it does fail.
Yeah.
Uh because you need four affirmative votes to approve a variance application.
Thank you, attorney.
So, um. That motion is uh is that application is denied. And moving on, any old business withdrawal for application ZBA twenty-one dash nine. Eight Race Rock Road. So I think we'll see that in the future.
They they intend to regroup and come forward at a later date.
Okay. And new business, Jill, we have um to set.
We have a little old business, I think, that attorney Avina wants to.
Attorney Avina.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
I guess I get to say Happy New Year a little bit late, but hello. Um so town attorney Rob Avina, um we do have a little history to go over tonight. Um I think if you all recall, uh I believe it was last fall. Uh we had a pending of uh appeal of Philomena's Restaurant. Um regarding um a ruling that was made uh as to uh the use of outdoor music. Uh at the restaurant venue. Um subsequent to that. Uh Philomena's Restaurant decided to withdraw that appeal before. So that's why I didn't check back in with you because we did not need to set down a hearing uh on that appeal of of the zoning officer of of Jill. Subsequent to that, uh Jill reviewed and approved a permit. That's allowed under the zoning regulations. Um that allows a business such as Philomena's to sponsor a certain amount of outdoor venue. Uh concerts or activities uh per year. Um and so that was issued. And within fifteen days uh by law of its issuance. An appeal was brought uh by some neighbors uh to the business. Uh by attorney Mark Keppel, who's a sole practitioner in Stonington. And attorney Mark Keppel uh did file that appeal. Uh of the zoning officer's decision to issue uh the entertainment, summer entertainment permit. Uh to Philomena's for twenty twenty-two. Um that is pending. Um so technically, tonight, I was going to discuss with you. Uh setting down the public hearing for that at your first meeting of of April, uh first week of April meeting. Um however, this afternoon, in discussing it with attorney Mark Keppel. Uh his decision was to allow additional time uh and not have the meeting scheduled until the first. Meeting of May. So I'm here to report tonight that we don't have to schedule that at the moment. And we'll be back with you uh in early April and see where we are. Uh he does uh thank you for the indulgence of the board to give him some more time. He is exploring uh alternatives uh to his appeal um that. May involve some planning and zoning and and other issues, but at the moment. Uh this board does not need to be concerned about the pending appeal and um. I will report back to you in early April. Any questions? But that's that's where that stands.
Thank you. Uh does anybody else have any new business? Jill, do we have anything?
Just one small one small piece of old business. I I had I had an emergency phone call during the vote for uh. The uh public hearing on twenty-two dash four. Um I I would vote in in favor of that. I believe it passed anyway.
No, we didn't vote on that tonight. We vote on that next month. So that was a public hearing tonight, and then next month we vote on it.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I missed a vote because.
No.
I was uh otherwise listening, so, okay. Thank you.
No. Any other old business, new business?
There's no new business to report from this office.
Okay, and so next month we will have a meeting and we will vote on the application that was. Um the public hearing tonight of forty-two My Rock.
That's correct.
Any other correspondence or new applications for next month?
No, we have nothing that's come in. Um but let's make sure that we specify the date of the meeting is April sixth.
Okay. Everybody, please put that on your calendar and please be there. All right, does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, John seconds it?
I'll second it.
Thank you. So we are adjourned for this evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you. Bye. Good night. Good night.